Mayor staff is ready when you are.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the rule to establish a forum?
Mayor Protem Ashby.
I'm here, thanks.
Councilmember Laloe. Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mercheneer.
Here.
Councilmember Getta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
I am here, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. A quorum has been established. Let's see, today, the city attorney, would the city attorney please lead us in the pledging allegiance?
All right, I'll stand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good afternoon to everyone. We have, I'd say, a moderately lengthy agenda, not as long as some of the previous weeks, but substantive nonetheless. Why don't we begin with the consent calendar? Are there questions on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
Mayor, I have asked the clerk to pull number six for a discussion, and I have a comment on number four, the legislative platform.
Okay, let's just.
And I'm gonna recuse myself on item three. This is Sheneer.
Okay, recuse. Did any other member want to hear any items separately? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, for the record, item fifteen is being withdrawn.
Okay, fifteen is being withdrawn. Very good. So why don't we have Councilmember Harris then discuss item, which item was it, Councilmember Harris?
So, a comment on item four, and I wanted to pull item six for just a brief discussion, or at least.
Okay, so why don't you comment on item four, then we'll take a motion on the consent calendar, other than item six and fifteen, which has been pulled.
Great. So, on item four, I just wanted to ask Consuelo, I noticed that in the priorities, the urban forestry issue is not mentioned under, you know, the climate section. And I think it's a good thing to put in our legislative platform since, you know, supporting our urban forestry master plan and our urban forests generally is an integral part of our response to climate change. So I wanted to offer that to Consuelo, you know, if not to put in now, certainly in the future, because it's an important piece.
Happy to do that.
Thank you, Consuelo.
Okay, is there a motion and a second on the consent calendar, with the exception again of item six and item fifteen?
Yeah. I'll move consent.
Second.
Second, moved in second. Is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
So, Mr. Mayor, I believe Councilmember Valenzuela already moved that, so that would be a second by Councilmember Harris.
Okay.
Accurate. I do have one caller on the consent calendar.
Go go.
Thank you. May I have a caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, my name is Stephanie Harris, District Eight. I am hoping, I understand that you guys are only removing item fifteen from the calendar. Can you go into more detail on item number eight eleven and actually have that one removed as well, have it individually discussed? Thank you, and that's all the comment I have.
Thank you for your comment.
Let's hear from staff on item eleven, then. The caller constituent asked for an explanation of what item eleven is about. Let's get a very brief report, please.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Ryan Moore. I'm your Public Works Director. Item eleven is our Vision Zero Top Five Corridor Plan. So Vision Zero, of course, is our traffic safety program, which we initiated a few years ago to eliminate fatalities and serious injury in traffic collisions in the city of Sacramento. So that was our first overriding master plan. This is the first phase before you tonight. Both, actually, items eleven and twelve are the first implementation phases. So these identify of the entire high injury network, which are the roadways in Sacramento, which receive most of the fatalities and serious injuries. The top five corridors is the five quarters that receive the most, so sort of the worst of the worst. And the plan before you is a plan that staff has put together to implement improvements that will holistically go through and address the issues on those roadways, on those quarters that create the circumstances that result in the higher-than-normal incidence of traffic collisions.
Okay, does any member, Councilmember Vang, this is, I believe, a constituent district date, anybody wanna make any comment on item eleven?
No, I think I would like to move forward with this. I think staff has done their thorough kind of study and really glad to see that we have a major corridor in the project as well, because I know there's been fatalities in District Eight, and so look forward to, for us moving forward on this, on this project.
Okay, thank you very much. So, the consent calendar, again, with the exception of items six and fifteen, has been moved in second, and Councilmember Sheneer is recusing himself on item three. Let's call the rule.
Mayor Protem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mercheneer.
Aye.
Councilmember Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. Let's go back now to item six. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I don't know how many of my colleagues have actually been to the Center for Sacramento History. It's located in District Three on Sequoia Pacific Avenue. This is a repository of many artifacts of Sacramento's history. It is actually a fascinating place. It's not set up like a museum, but it's a storage vault, basically, for lots of memorabilia of Sacramento's history, which is very rich. It's run by Marcia Eymann, who is a tremendous curator, but the center really couldn't survive without a lot of volunteers. And we've had an extraordinary event happen, in that one of our volunteers, his name is Harry Gobler, unfortunately passed away last year. But his wife has left us with a grant, a very generous grant, to do something that we have struggled to do as a council for quite a while, which is create a storage vault for the pictures and film that we have. We have a repository of film and pictures that is exceptional across the country. I urge all of my colleagues to get over to the Center for Sacramento History. It's a really fun way to spend a couple of hours with Marcia and look at, you know, the physical evidence of Sacramento's history. Anyway, our negatives of these tremendous film clips have been deteriorating, and we've struggled to create a cold storage vault to maintain them for posterity. Well, Harry Gobler, I'm just gonna read you a little bit here about the Gobler Park Trust donation to the Center for the Sacramento History. The Gobler Park Trust is making a donation of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars in memory of Harry Gobler, a volunteer for the center and the Sacramento History Museum. Harry passed away from cancer in October 2020. This donation in his name will be used to help support the construction of a cold storage vault for the Center for Sacramento History that will house the center's film and photography collections, which are some of the rarest and most valuable archives in the nation. And believe me, that is not an overstatement. Harry Gobler was a highly valued member of the Center for Sacramento History and the Sacramento History Museum. And he helped with a lot of significant projects. He was a retired NASA engineer. He designed the layout of our underground tour spaces and the structural security for our historic neon sign collection on display at the Golden One Center. He used his expertise for many other projects as well, including initial work on the center's cold storage vault. His engineering skills, his calm, purposeful planning and warm and friendly personality brought important projects to completion on time and under budget. It is highly fitting that his name should always be associated with the care of these priceless film and photographic collections in the vault that he helped plan. I specifically want to thank Lorene Park, Harry's wife, for this gift of funds and for sharing Harry with us for the last ten years. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank Marcia Eymann and all of her hard work and dedication, and urge all of you to get over to the center and have a look at these archives. So I want to move item six.
Okay, Jeff, is this the cold storage facility within the city archives? Is that, is it all one and the same?
Yeah, these are the history archives, and Jody, you can perhaps tell the mayor, you know, about the plans for the cold storage vault.
Part and Jody goes, Mr. Vice, or sorry, Councilmember Harris, I'd like to second the motion as the new member of the Sacramento History Alliance Board, and I thank you for your thoughtful tribute to what's been going on there, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. I just want to make one quick comment, if I may, because now that I, I took a tour in my first year as mayor, and I completely agree with you. I recommend this. You know, and thank you to Harry Park and Lorene. You know, it's important, I think, to highlight the unsung heroes, the heroines of our city. Here's what I'll always remember going there. We live in the age of Twitter, Facebook, breaking news. I always remember looking at the old Sacramento Bee archives that are bound up and looking at April sixteenth, eighteen sixty-five, and seeing that the assassination of Abraham Lincoln was on page A three of the Sacramento Bee, not A one, not the front page. It was on the third page of the Sacramento Bee. That's how much life has changed. Nope, not, there wasn't enough breaking news. So, really fascinating tour through Sacramento, but also American history as well.
Well, Mayor, it was on page A three, because it took three days to reach Sacramento.
That may be the explanation, but I still found it odd.
I would just once more like to thank Lorene. Thank you so much for sharing Harry with us and this generous donation to the cold storage vault. It's really well received, and we are very grateful.
Okay, was there anything to add, Jody? You want to add anything?
No, he has been a wonderful, his presence will be very, very much missed at the, at the Center for Sacramento History, and we're just absolutely grateful to Lorene for supporting the archives and the cold storage.
Yep, that's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you in memory of Harry Park.
Harry Gobler, Mayor, Harry Gobler.
Mary Golden, what, I'm sorry. Let us call the rule on the item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Ashby.
I've been there, Jeff. It is a fantastic facility and really fun to walk around in, yes.
Councilmember Laloe.
I have not been there yet, but after this, I'm definitely looking forward to it. Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Vice Mercheneer.
Aye.
Councilmember Getta.
Yeah, I want to thank Maurice Reed for making sure I went out there. Another District Six constituent who supports it, an aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
I have not been there yet, but I will take my family and look forward to visiting there. Councilmember Harris, thank you for your advocacy on this, and my vote is an aye.
Councilmember Vang.
Yes.
Mayor Steinberg.
That's great. It's a great way to start off the meeting. Very good. Nine to nothing. Excellent. Okay, let us move now, members, to the discussion calendar. We do have three items. And the first is a, I believe it's an S H R A item, One Year Action Plan for Federal Program Allocation Process Workshop. This is not a decision point today, as I understand it, but the first of several agenda items over the course of months where we're going to discuss the city's allocation of various federal funds. And so let me turn it over to our director, LaShel Those, here, please.
Good evening. This is, as you mentioned, Mayor, the first of two workshops. This is to talk about a very important source of funding, which is our Community Development Block Grant. I've had an opportunity to really kind of lay out exactly how these funds can be used. We have Celia here, who's gonna walk through some of the projects that you've seen in the past. And really, it's an opportunity in this workshop mode is to hear from you as elected officials, those projects in your specific districts that you think really should be considered as we move forward in the process. So I'll turn it over to Celia.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Celia Ingez, I'm the program manager for the federal programs. And this after, this evening, I'm gonna give a high-level overview of our federal programs. And as LaShel mentioned, this is an opportunity for you to ask questions, as well as to, if there are ideas for activities in your districts that you would like us, as S H R A and city staff, to look at. This is your opportunity, not the last, but the first. So. So, this is the first of a couple of workshops on our twenty twenty-two One Year Action Plan. We are, have changed the schedule a bit for the last couple of years to sync up more with the city's capital improvement program schedule. So your city staff began at the end of last year identifying capital improvement projects in parks and recreation and public works. And so this is the opportunity for us to talk about how to fund those from a large, a broader perspective, not just as a C D B G project, but overall, all of the resources that are available to the city, and how to utilize the funding sources appropriately and to leverage the maximum amount. So we think this is a great way to maximize all of that. So today, I'm just gonna give a broad overview. So the action plan actually allocates four different funding sources. They are for what we call entitlement programs. And that entitlement program, the four funding sources are Community Development Block Grant, C D B G, Home Partnership, which is for affordable housing, which funds primarily the multifamily programs, multifamily projects that come forward for your approval, E S G, which is the Emergency Solutions Grant, which goes towards supporting homeless shelters and rapid rehousings or unhoused population. And the fourth is Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, or H A P W A, which goes to provide for both services as well as rental assistance for folks. So the One Year Action Plan allocates funding for all those three, and that will happen in October, November, October of this, of twenty twenty-one for twenty twenty-two. See, I just wanted to say that the formula grants, these four are what we call formula grants. And so HUD has these formulas that actually determine how much each jurisdiction receives. So it's nothing that we can do. It is all based on a formula that every, approximately April, they tell us how much each jurisdiction will receive. Up until that point, we estimate what that amount will be, based on the previous years and other, sort of, the larger political nature of what's going on at the federal levels. So, the, I'm gonna focus a bit on the Community Development Block Grant, because that's a lot of what you, this workshop will be. But we start every five years with an analysis of impediments to fair housing, and so that is looking at what, what are the issues in the city facing, that face fair housing. And we presented this to the council back in twenty nineteen, so for the new council members, we're more than happy to provide you an overview of what that is. But it is, unfortunately, we're dealing with the long-term issues around segregation, and they are, as we all know, are predominant in the housing, area of housing. So it is lots of the discussion. It's great to see that there's lots of discussion around that. And your Community Development Block Grant funds are really to address those inequities in housing in your, in the community. So the analysis of impediment to fair housing identifies the challenges around fair housing. And then the consolidated plan, which is sort of your guiding principles, identifies how, in broad terms, how to allocate those resources, specifically Community Development Block Grant, Home, E S G, and H A P W A. Overall, the main thrust of the consolidated plan is to create ladders of opportunity for our low and moderate income residents through affordable housing, through multifamily programs, through community infrastructure, to make sure that all of our neighborhoods have access to a variety of resources. So that's our community centers, funding to improve parks or create parks, libraries, pedestrian and bicycle improvements as well. And then the third category is public services. And so we frequently fund those senior services, like Meals on Wheels and emergency shelters. So, again, to the overall, goes to affordable housing, our infrastructure in our disadvantaged communities, as well as public services in our communities as well. So additionally, to span C D B G, it must meet one of the three national objectives. So the first is that it needs to benefit a community that is primarily residential, and that at least fifty-one percent are low and moderate income. And so we have, we've identified, based on data provided by HUD, the low and moderate income neighborhoods. And so that's the first pass, if there's a park that needs improvement, and it's in a low and, in low and moderate income neighborhood, that could be funded with Community Development Block Grant. The other, so that is based on a, again, based on geography, if it is in a low and moderate income community. The second is if it's a low and moderate income clientele, and so that is usually, for example, Meals on Wheels, where you have seniors that are, to receive Meals on Wheels, they must be qualified annually, working with that organization, that they are low income. So it is, each individual is specifically evaluated to make sure that they are below eighty percent median income. And the last is eligible, a national objective is moderate, low and moderate income housing. So funding to help to, as gap financing for a rehab project, affordable housing rehab project would be eligible. So, again, must meet one of these three national objectives. Then, we look at a closer, that's sort of the first take, and then there has to be an, actually, an eligible activity. So that could be a public facility or infrastructure, public services, acquisition of land for public, for a public facility or for housing, clearance and remediation activities, so that could be remediation of lead or other toxins on a site that would be developed as affordable housing or could be filled as a park later, homeowner assistance. We also have up to twenty percent, which could be used for planning administration, so that's really for S H R A staff to administer the program, and then also for environmental studies. So that could be both your C I Q A and your N I P A, because this is federal funds, your National Environmental Protection Act funding. Review is required. Or if there is a site that needs remediation, those environmental studies would be eligible as a major activity as well. There are ineligible activities that are very important, so government buildings, so C D B G can't pay for a new, contribute towards a new city hall. They can't pay towards regular operating and maintenance expenses, sort of purchase of equipment, income payments. Unfortunately, it can't go towards new housing, new affordable housing construction. It can pay for rehab, but not new construction. And regional projects as well, it can't go towards. This is what our estimates for the four funding sources in twenty twenty-two, I'm just gonna go round up. So approximately four point eight for Community Development Block Grant, C D B G, two point six for Home, towards affordable, multifamily affordable housing, about four hundred thousand for Emergency Solutions Grant, towards emergency shelter and services, and one point four for housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, for a total of about nine point four. It's important to know that this is just new entitlement money. For Home, we do receive in program income. So in October, when we're here before you for the approval, these numbers will be a little different, and I just want you to be aware of that. In twenty twenty-one, these were the allocations for the Community Development Block Grant. So two point six for infrastructure and public facilities, and we'll go into more detail about what those projects have been for the last two years. Housing development for affordable housing, not quite five hundred thousand, public services, almost six hundred thousand. And then grant planning and administration at about seven fifty. HUD loan repayment, this is the Section one oh eight loan for Twin Rivers or Marisol Village, paying for the infrastructure, and then Capital Reserve, which is essentially the contingency. So we allocated about five point five million in Community Development Block Grant last year in October. Now, I'm just gonna go over and review the projects that were funded in the last two years. You'll see a lot of park projects, because in our disadvantaged communities, there isn't the park impact fees, which are generated, which help to pay for new parks or renovation of parks. So you'll see a lot of that. And then you'll also see the description that it's design and engineering and construction, and sometimes they're separated. Because we have spending requirements that we need to spend the funding within twelve to eighteen months, we often divide a project up into design funding and then construction, so we aren't behind the eight ball in spending. So, gonna go through each district. So in Council District Two, we funded Robla, a community park, as well as some infrastructure projects on De Pasol Boulevard, the road diet, and an infrastructure study. And so for the road diet for De Pasol, we funded both the design and the construction. In District Three, we provided funding for both the design and the construction of the new River District basketball courts there. In District Four, we are funding, funding towards a design and engineering of O'Neil Field, construction of a new ADA compliant restroom for the soccer field there, also funding Robert, the Matsui Park Access Improvement Project. And then, and also, the Broadway Complete Street straddles both Districts Four and Five, so you kind of see, I've identified it there as in both districts. And so it is the engineering plans in this phase for that Complete Street project. And then on to District Five, and Lawrence Park doing design and engineering for that existing park. Mangon Park as well, designing and engineering for park improvements. We're also providing funding for the Franklin Boulevard Complete Street, the Complete Street Program. And many times for the street projects, we are leveraging other funding sources. So the Franklin Boulevard Complete Streets is leveraging S A C O G funding, and so C D B G is often a very critical piece of the overall funding for street improvement projects. And then the last project is Temple Park in District Five, District Five, where we're doing design and engineering and construction to that very small park there in Oak Park. In District Six, funding the. In district six, funding the two very important signals that provide pedestrian safety to the SIM Center on Logan and Elder and Women Hill. And then in district seven, providing some improvements, funding improvements for the Susan B. Anthony Call the Park, but it's actually the play fields for the school. So that is Susan B. Anthony Park, which is actually Sacramento City Unified School District property. And lastly, but not least, in district eight, we provided funding for Meadowview Street Skate Phases one and two. Again, we're, we're part of the leveraging for federal SAICOG funding, improvements to Meadowview Park on the construction of that. And then Nelson Park, both the design engineering and the construction. So that sort of, that hopefully gives you a flavor and idea, especially for the new council members of the types of projects that we provide funding to. So what we do is we, I'm just going to kind of give a high level overview of the sort of the process. SHRA staff meets with city staff from the Parks Department, from utilities and public works, as well as innovation and economic development to identify projects for the next year. And so we've, we do that in, beginning in December and January and February. Then we come before you to provide an overview of CDBG, invite any comments that you may have or suggestions for projects. And then we will do, continue to meet city and SHRA staff. And then we will be back to, we'll come out to the, have a workshop with our, our commission. And then probably in, in May timeframe, come back to the council with the preliminary list of projects that we've identified. And then we would come back in October, November for approval of that project list, as well as all of the other funding sources. So with that, I am available for questions. We, there are other city, city representatives on the team, present as well if you may have questions about other projects.
Okay. Thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. I think it's really important, especially with three new members, that we, we give a good overview of what these various funding sources are. So appreciate it. I have council member Harris, who is up to ask the first question.
Thank you, Mayor. Sally, I thank you for the presentation. You know, I raised my hand first because I want to lay down a marker for all $4.8 million of the CDBG funds. So, so I'm glad I got in early and I want to tell you where you need to spend it. So Gardenland and Northgate have been neglected for a long time. In terms of Vision Zero corridors, they come up number six every time. And yet there have been several fatalities there and the people feel very imperiled. I will give you a specific list, obviously, coming up. But there are a couple of projects in, in Northgate and Gardenland that I think are very eligible at this point. And, you know, as far as area income and so forth, you, you know that they are eligible, as do I. So we're working on signalization improvements on the Northgate corridor. And we, we have some gap that we need funding for. And so that is a great project. There are beautification issues that we could work with on that corridor as well. Also at Ethan and Hawk in Gardenland, we've been trying to find funds for a small pocket park. The property has been set aside for years. And because of the lack of development in South Natomas, it's been very hard to get PIF and Quimby money to pull this one off. It's not a really expensive project, but it would be extremely meaningful to River Gardens neighborhood. So that is one that I would like to look at. And as far as services goes, you could take the whole $4 million, $4.8 million and give it to Stanford Settlement, as far as I'm concerned. But, you know, as far as Meals on Wheels, they serve an elderly population. They are currently distributing food to those who are food insecure all over South Natomas, Gardenland and Northgate. They could really use some of this CDBG money for the purposes that they affect, which are, are absolute direct benefits to the community. So thank you very much for agreeing to give me the 4.8 million. And I will provide my last fourth with.
Very good. It's, you know, it's always important to be first in the queue. I mean, that's.
That's a hard lesson, but I've learned it in six years.
Okay, Madam Click, I'm having a bit of a hard time on the screen here looking at, I see council members, Valenzuela, Gueda. Why, why don't we go in that order then? It's fine.
Yeah, they've signed it. Gueda is first and then Valenzuela.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman Gueda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Jeff punched up first and, you know, I think he took all the thunder there. But I, he does actually bring up, but exactly, he gets all the money. But I, I do want to actually agree with them on a, a few points here. One is looking at our commercial corridors and figuring out how we also look at, at combining our efforts here so that we're maximizing the federal funds that we get with some of our efforts there. So I think a couple, a couple of thoughts here is also to look at projects that are among our commercial corridors. We're trying to do a lot of work there right now with our own city investments and our housing funding. So that includes Northgate, De Paso. Of course, I always talk about Stockton Boulevard. It's a critical piece. And, and also looking at, since, since the construction of housing isn't an eligible project, but acquisition of land is, we do have in a lot of our commercial corridors, a lot of vacant lots that aren't doing much. Again, they're not producing much. So what we could, what I'd like to see is if there are acquisition of land. And now that we have some money in the housing trust fund from our mid-year budget allocation, there might be opportunities where we can maximize the combination of funds here. And then the last piece I'll, I'll bring up, and of course, I'll, I'll have a list that I can send to your staff, LaShaw, on this, is looking at some of our parkways or easements that in communities where they don't have any parks. And these have become essentially the only place of open space. But they're, they're, they're essentially in the public works department. So I'd like to figure out how do we take advantage of places that could be parks for communities that don't have parks to be able to do that. And I, I bring up 21st Avenue, for example, that's off of Stockton Boulevard, near Colonial Heights Library, where there isn't a park for the Talag Village community. And, and it could be a potential, but. So those are just some thoughts. And most importantly, just to circle back, I think figuring out how we best align our federal, limited federal dollars with our other efforts to maximize the most. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Gueda, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Yeah. And I'm also, I'm looking forward to hearing from staff. I'm sure they've got a long list of things in the district and bathrooms at parks that have been broken and intersections that aren't safe. Unfortunately, in district four, since, I mean, obviously pre-COVID, we get a lot of the commuter traffic in and out. And there's been a lot of really tenuous intersections and issues that have come up. And the slow streets pilot just started in our district. And so I don't know, maybe if we make that permanent, but I'm sure we'll have lots of ideas. And I am really interested in exploring this purchasing of existing buildings because it is way cheaper. I know we all like the jobs and everything that comes with building new. But with the spending, thinking about what those opportunities would be for like down payment assistance to some of our nonprofits or moving properties into deed restrictions so we could try to increase and grab those properties before they go out into the market. I do have a question for SHRA staff because I know currently we're kind of basing our analysis of impediments off of what we're doing. And after the Trump administration really gutted firmly furthering fair housing, you know, we created our own system in California. But I know there's a lot of scuttlebutt that, you know, it's expected the federal administration is going to bring that back. And I'm wondering what that might mean for our funding plans? If we need to be kind of factoring in those stronger requirements of funding we have available and what you all are sort of thinking about in that regard.
So we started the analysis of impediments to fair housing under the Obama administration. So that was new. And it was a whole new program and a new and a, and a more focused and more strategic look at that. And, and of course, partway through, that went away. We did not change that analysis. It still met the original intent, the original objectives of the analysis of impediments to fair housing. And so I, I think it, there shouldn't be anything limiting us when the new policies come into place, different policies. So we, we are, I think, our consultants did a really thorough job of looking at what those issues are in more detail. And we're more than happy to share that with you because it's right in line with a lot of the work that, that the city council and has been identifying to do in these last, last year or so.
That's awesome. I'm really glad to hear that we kept that high bar. So thank you. And I think for a full list of projects, again, for us newbies on the council, for all of the sources of funding, like are there full lists posted somewhere of the decisions that have been made for the last few years so that we could kind of get a full, full look at what's happened in the last, like, I don't know, five years or so?
Let me, if I might pick up on what Councilmember Valenzuela just said. And I, I know, this is the way I felt when I was a new member back in the day, that the, the organization of city government is, is kind of complicated, right? You've got SHRA, which is a joint powers that is both a city and county joint powers. But, and while there is a separate commission, they report separately to the city and county. And the county has funds on their side of the ledger as well. So you have that. We have our city general fund. And then we've got all of this new federal money coming in, right? And some state money and homelessness and housing and other things. And what I want to make sure that we do for transparency and to sort of answer the members' questions about, okay, what is available overall? What are the particular restrictions on funds? And then what are our options on how to spend them? I want to make sure that the calendar here for these workshops coincide with our city budget process so that these dollars are not seen as external to the overall investment strategy of the city, that they're integrated. Just like Councilmember Gueda mentioned, there may be opportunities to integrate some of these dollars with the housing trust fund. We've got our homeless plans, whether it's the five-point plan, whether it's the subsequent spreadsheet. Well, all of these dollars ought to be considered in that context in addition to the, the neighborhood fix-it projects that Councilmember Valenzuela, that you alluded to. And, and so that's the only thing here. I just want to make sure that this process, city manager and our, and Director Dozier, that it is integrated in the overall budget discussion. Because, you know, in the end, green is green. It has some restrictions. But green is green. And we have a lot of demand out there to do a lot of different things for our communities.
And in fact, Mayor, that's exactly why we changed this process to realign it so that it does coordinate with the city's budget schedule. And that's why these workshops happen so early in the year. So that we are doing exactly what you're talking about is coordinating with the city staff and those projects and that they all really leverage each other and come together. And then, you know, you're going through your budget process at a time where things will get approved. And then this will come back for a final approval after your budget process. But it is all integrated together so that we can achieve those objectives. It was in the past, a bit more disjointed. But that's what the alignment is all about and why it starts with me and the city manager kind of kicking the process off.
Good. Well, that's excellent. Appreciate it. And that's, that's.
I just wanted to add, the council member Valenzuela, who did talk about, you know, affirmatively furthering fair housing. And the city really did step up, even though the Trump administration was really not supportive of this. But it wasn't just the city of Sacramento, it was all of the jurisdictions. Because this is something that really goes beyond just the city of Sacramento. The AI actually goes to, you know, the other incorporated cities and the county. And everyone felt strongly to continue that work effort and not to really take our, our feet off the gas pedal. So I'm just really proud that everyone really did stick to their guns on the analysis of impediments.
Thank you, LaShaw. And yeah, if we could follow up on the list of previous projects, I'm excited to dig in on this with you all. Thank you.
Sure. Is it all on, on, on your website? All the previous expenditure plans?
I don't think it goes back five years, but the information that was presented tonight was to show you what you pretty much approved last year, but we have it from all the years back. So we can absolutely provide that.
Okay. Very good. Is there any, there's no public testimony on this item? And again, it's a workshop. There is no vote. And so thank you for a good start. Appreciate it. Let's now move to item 19. Who's taking this one?
Yes, Mayor and council members, this is Shelley Banks Robinson, your HR director. And the California Government Code requires us to, in on a discussion item, present you salary ranges for executive staff. And this is to set the salary for the new position that the city has created for the Director of Community Response.
Okay. Is there any public testimony on this?
There's no public testimony on this item.
Okay. Councilmember Harris, you're first again.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm batting a thousand tonight. Pretty happy about that. So I'd like to, I'd like to move the resolution because quite simply, Bridget Dean is the perfect person for this job and we are lucky to have her. She's already proved her worth. There are good things ahead. Just want to move the item. I'll second.
Okay. No public testament. I don't see any other members. Let's call the rule, please.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Bill O'Loe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Grace Merschene?
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
The mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Okay. Very good. That passed my thing. We have the final item of the afternoon and evening, a very, very important item relating to rental assistance. This is item 20. Who's presenting here?
So we're working in concert with, with Danielle as well as Sarah is going to present on this particular item. So Danielle, did you have a couple of words at the beginning or did you want us to just jump in?
Yeah, I'll start real fast and then pass it over to Sarah. So good evening, everybody. Danielle Foster, your Housing Policy Manager. And as you recall, as part of the city's allocation of COVID relief funding, 3.3 million of CRF was set aside in partnership with SHRA for rental assistance and homeless prevention. SHRA did a great job of getting that, those funds out quickly and assisting 881 families, with 68% of those families being extremely low income or 30% of AMI. We're excited to come back to you tonight because the city is lined up to get $31.7 million of both state and federal funds. And these additional funds with a slightly longer timeline, we're looking forward to assisting more families in the city and reaching segments of the community in partnership with our community-based organizations. So I'll pass it over to Sarah O'Daniel with SHRA to speak more about the details of the program and the actions that we're requesting tonight. Sarah?
Thank you, Danielle. Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Sarah O'Daniel with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Today is a great day as we get one step closer to providing rental assistance to those continuing to be impacted by the pandemic and need this essential financial assistance to stay stably housed in our community. To remind you all, in the fall of last year, the council allocated a combination of Coronavirus Relief Act funds and federal community development block grant funds, or CDVG funds totaling $5.4 million. In addition, the county allocated another $1.1 million to this pot for a total regional amount of $6.5 million for rental assistance for the larger Sacramento community. With very little time to implement the program, we conducted listening sessions throughout the community, opened up our portal and for three weeks in October. And I wanted to take a few minutes to share with you some of the data from the first phase of the Sacramento Emergency Rental Assistance Program, or SARAH, Phase One for short. And then I'll talk about the new funds that have come down. And then I'll talk about the new funds that have come down to our community. We received approximately 4,400 applications for both the city and county. And of this number, 1490 or 37% of the applications were from the city residents. We wanted to make sure when we set up the program that it was uniform, no matter what funding source was used, what jurisdiction the family lived in. $3.3 million of the city's funds had to be spent by December, basically in seven weeks from when we got approval, including the time of the holidays. We heard from council and the community that it was important to prioritize families with children and those that are deeply vulnerable and on the cusp of being homeless. In order to serve as many families as possible, we put a cap of $4,000 to help rent, to help pay rent arrears and current rent. And within a seven-week period, staff worked really hard and spent 100% of those CARES funds by the December 30th deadline. Attached in your packet is some of the data related to the families we assisted. And it is also on our website at shra.org. As a council, you prioritize families with children. And of all the applications processed, 68% of the families assisted were families with children. Also, 76% of households we assisted had a median income at 30% of area median income or extremely low-income families. So for a family of three, income could not be over $23,350. Most of the families we assisted were families with two-bedroom households with a close second for, second and third place for three- and one-bedroom households. We assisted households of all races, with 38% being African-American households, followed by 27% stating "other" as their choice. This could be multiracial families or those that didn't fit into any of the other categories. I would like to preface and say, state that these categories are ones that are used by HUD and other federal agencies. And which is why there is that other category. In terms of ethnicity, there is a separate category here for that. And 22% of the families indicated that they were Hispanic or Latino. Regarding age, 51% of the head of households were between the ages of 35 and 54. This chart shows the top 10 zip codes that were assisted in the city. The circled zip codes show the top three areas also severely impacted by the COVID-19 virus and are at greater risk of eviction. These three zip codes are 95823, 95838, and 95820. So we really are hitting those zip codes with families that are in need. And we are making an impact with the program when we did Phase One. 72% of the families requested between $3,000 and $4,000 in arrears. And $4,000 was the maximum that was allowed in Phase One. So to sum up with all the funds that we had, we assisted 930 families and 562 unique landlords in the city. And the average payment was $3,444. And as a region, including the city and the county funds, we assisted 1,230 families and 780 landlords. I would like to now transition to discuss the new funds that have been allocated by the federal and state government for emergency rental assistance. On December 20th, 2020, the Congress approved a $900 billion pandemic relief package in which $25 billion was allocated to the Department of Treasury to disperse Emergency Rental Assistance Program Funds, or ERAP for short. And these funds were going to local jurisdictions to help those that are unemployed, to help unemployed renters who are impacted by the virus. The city of Sacramento received $15.2 million from the federal government. And the county received $30.8 million. And as a region, we received $45 million from the Department of Treasury. On January 28th of this year, the California legislature passed the COVID-19 Tenant Relief Act, or SB 91, that extends the eviction protections through June 30th, 2021, and created a mechanism to deploy $2.6 billion in emergency rental resources that they receive directly from the Department of Treasury to help California residents and landlords who are impacted by the virus. The state came up with their own guidelines. They just had to make things a little bit complicated there. So they layered their guidelines on top of the federal guidelines. And they gave jurisdictions with populations over 200,000 a three option. One is a state program where the city provides the state with their federal allocation. And the state will run the rental assistance program for the city utilizing both the federal and the state funds. Or there was a self-administration option. The city receives a state block grant allocation, and that would be $16.4 million. Keep in mind, this is in addition to the federal funds. And then the city would administer all the rental, would administer the rental assistance program consistent with the state and federal program requirements. The third option was a self-administer and state administer option. The city self-administers the federal allocation, but does not conform their local program to the state's requirements. However, then the city cannot apply for a block grant from the state. And the state will administer their own program using their own criteria. So you have two different programs happening at the same time. And the responsibility to manage the duplication of benefits, should that happen, lies with the city. So with those three options, again, the, the city applied for option two, which gives the city an additional $16.4 million to help renters in the city. The county also chose that option, adding $33.2 million to their rental assistance program funds. Critical to keep in mind is that the program must be consistent with both state and federal program guidelines. So in total, the city receives $31.6 million between the federal and state funds. And the county receives $64 million. So as a region, we have $95.6 million to help unemployed renters impacted by COVID with these rental assistance payments. So I'd just like to take a few minutes to go over some of the key highlights from both the federal and state programs. The Department of Treasury set up the basic federal guidelines where they require us to assist households with a Gross Household Income Act or below 80% of area median income or AMI, so low-income families. This is the basic eligibility of the program. So for example, for a family of three, the gross household income cannot be over $62,150 at the time of application. The renter household must have at least one member that is unemployed or has experienced a reduction in household income, incurred significant costs due to COVID, or experienced a financial hardship due to the pandemic. And households must demonstrate a risk of being imminently unhoused or facing housing instability. The federal guidelines also state that we must prioritize households that earn up to 50% of area median income. So those are the very low-income families. So for a family of three, they cannot earn more than $38,850 at time of application. Or they can also have been unemployed for 90 days. That's also a priority at the date of application. And we have to prioritize payments of rental arrears. Those are the prioritizations. With the federal guidelines, we can pay rental arrears, we can pay utility payments in arrears, and we can also pay three months of rent prospectively. Landlords can apply on behalf of their tenants, and tenants can apply for themselves as well. Jurisdictions get priority to receive additional funds if they expend 65% of the federal funds by September 30th, which is approximately $10 million. So, and all 15.2 million of the federal funds need to be spent by the end of the year. It is very specific that subsidized households can be assisted, but no duplication of assistance can be provided to those families. So to complicate things, as I mentioned, the state sweetened the pot and provided the option to receive an additional $16.4 million. So that increased the rental assistance pot from $15 million to $31.6 million. But we have to follow the state guidelines layered on top of the federal guidelines that I just talked about. So the state dictates that we offer landlords 80% of the tenants' rental arrears accumulated between April 1st, 2020 and March 31st of this year. Landlords, in turn, agree to accept this payment as payment in full of any unpaid rent for that time period. If the landlord does not participate in the program, the eligible tenant may apply for 25% of their rental arrears to pay the landlord, which is in line with AB 3088, which was passed last year by the governor, which states that renters who missed rental payments cannot be evicted if at least 25% of each rental payment that comes due or will come due is paid through June 30th, 2021. In addition, the state program allows us to provide prospective payments of 25% of monthly rent for the month of April, May, and June of this year. So for the most part, the guidelines for these funds are prescribed to us. The good news is that there is no cap on the rental arrears that we can pay from April 1st of last year to March 31st of this year. And rental arrears must be paid first before anything else. And the state also allows us to pay for utility arrears. Immigration status does not impact household eligibility to the program. And we will make payments to the landlord. However, if the landlord does not participate in the program, we will work with the renter to provide payments for 25% of the funds that are due. We are also working to create a partnership with SMD and PG&E to pay utility arrears for gas and electricity directly to the utility companies if possible. And as mentioned, the regulations are specific that families receiving rental assistance, such as the Housing Choice Voucher Program and public housing residents, can apply for funds as long as there is no duplication of funds provided to them. The state also prescribes how we will administer the funds. Funds must be administered in at least three rounds to meet state guidelines. First round of funds prioritize families below 50% AMI or unemployed for 90 days. The second round prioritizes families below 80% AMI and in a community disproportionately impacted by COVID-19. And the third round prioritizes families below 80% of AMI that are not addressed in Rounds One and Two. So this last week has been quite busy. We received the state guidelines just a couple of weeks ago. And we've been trying to put together the program here. We met with, we wanted to get the word out about the program to our community partners and the landlord community. And despite our complaints of Zoom fatigue with all the meetings that we have, it definitely came in handy to hold those virtual meetings. We partnered also with the California Apartment Association and city staff and held various listening sessions. We had over 200 participants who joined us on the Zoom calls and heard about the program. And we heard their thoughts and their questions and concerns, again, from both community-based organizations and the landlord community. We will continue to have ongoing community forums. And we will contractually partner with agencies, CBOs, that especially work with the non-English-speaking families and also those that are in the disadvantaged areas. So that they can apply for the program and can help them with the paperwork process. The advantage that we had was that we did a program on a smaller scale last year for $6.5 million. And we were able to cut our teeth and to really see what works and what doesn't. And we definitely know that we need to have a robust call center, as there are many calls that come in all the time. And we worked with a vendor to specially create this database from scratch for this program. And it has broad protections to prevent duplication of assistance, for example. And we will have information on our website for families to learn more about the program. And we will open our waitlist at various intervals during the year. The first opening of the waitlist is around the corner. And we are opening the waitlist on February the 25th, and it closes on March the 19th. Keep in mind, this is just the first time that we're opening, and we will open it throughout the year. But we wanted to open it up as soon as possible so that we can start processing applications, given both the state deadline as well as the federal deadlines that are coming pretty much right after the summer. We have information on our website at www.shra.org/sarah. There is a flyer that can be printed in addition to some of the guidelines. Information is translated and can, our application will also be translated into Spanish, Chinese, Mong, Russian, and Vietnamese. And, you know, it is not going to be a first come, first served basis, so everybody doesn't have to apply. At 12:01 on February the 25th, there will be a randomized computer ordering process that will be in place. Here is our anticipated timeline for the expenditure of funds. We are here before you today, and we will be going to the Board of Supervisors next week. We have met with the community and will continue to engage with the community on an ongoing basis. We've received lots of invites to hold Zoom sessions for various communities, and we will continue to do that. The current waitlist is going to open on the 25th until March 19th. We must expend all state funds, or $16.4 million, by August the 1st. So we have to get started right away to spend all the money. And by the end of September, or September 31st, we must expend 65% of the federal funds, or around $10 million. And all funds, state and federal, everything must be spent by the end of the year. So there's a lot of work to do between now and then. And I just wanted to end by just sharing some of the positive comments that we received after Phase One. You know, it was really heartwarming to see the thanks that we were, that were pouring in from our families. And it was during the holidays as well. And here are just some of the quotes of appreciation. "You have lifted a ton of weight off my shoulders. You are a lifesaver for me and my son." And then "The program has allowed me to catch up with my rent and focus my attention on the future and train for a new career at 61. My career has been eliminated due to the virus. I am a 40-year career corporate travel consultant." Again, families are just so very appreciative. And at this point, I'll stop talking and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Well, thank you. It's very, very exciting. Let's hear from the members first with questions. I know I have some questions, but I'm going to wait. I will start with Councilmember Geta, who was up first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually want to start off by actually giving some thank yous and, and going to move the staff recommendation here. And, but I do want to give a lot of sincere thanks to Sarah and SHRA staff and everyone who's taken the time to put together and piece together these, this recommendation here. I want to also thank, first off, Sacramento Act, folks at the Fuel Network, California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation, and Legal Services in Northern California, who, back in September, pulled together a number of stakeholders asking for rental assistance and support. And back then, we were able to put together some CARES funding to start this. And back then, we were able to put together some CARES funding to start this. In October, we looked at CDBG dollars with the, with the guidance and, and ingenuity of SHRA here. And then in, in December, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, you know, agreeing to, to use the balance of our CARES dollars to be able to provide even more rental assistance right after the shutdown even got worse. So we've, we've gone a long way in creating a rental assistance program here to help those who are unemployed, who found a difficult time, and now have, and have been on the edge of becoming homeless. So the, 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 I just wanna first start off by saying, I, I think, I wanna thank you for those. You answered a lot of, actually, my questions here. But one of them specifically that I want, I did want to ask is, or maybe direction is when you're working with the community-based organizations. I noticed we have some money that we set aside on there. Yes, Spanish and, and is one of the biggest languages. But one of the languages that have come up most recently is Farsi. And so, a- as, as we work with our immigrant and refugee community that, that we've seen need assistance, maybe if, if we don't have the internal capacity, if we can work with the CBOs who do have that capacity. And that might be the same in, in other areas. So I'll, I'll stop here at this moment, Mr. Mayor, and, and move the staff recommendation of, of looking at option two. Because it, while it does come with state and federal restrictions, it's an enormous amount of money that is building upon something that we've put together here and, and something that's very needed for those who are unemployed. It also reminds us that we need to start thinking about the workforce component to get help those who are unemployed. And I know SHRA is involved in that, and some of our CARES dollars has been focused on that. So we need to think about that on the, on the long term there. So I'll stop there. I don't know if there's public comment, Mr. Mayor, but I'll, I'll make the motion to move the staff report. And really, do wanna thank all the community-based organizations who have engaged in that. Oh, the last thing I forgot here to, I'm gonna ask SHRA to, as part of that direction, to work with some of the, the, the student population that we have here in Sacramento. And we have a diverse population in the sense that the CSU students may have families, they have different circumstances than your traditional university and older population. And I know some of them are maybe eligible for these situations, but if you can work with them to figure out how they can participate in this program, greatly appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember, I think that was Valens. And you're up next.
Thank you. Thank you. And yes, SHRA staff and, and city staff, thanks for, I know this was a Herculean lift in the last couple of weeks to get ready to take advantage of all these resources. So we're really excited to see this come to fruition. I did have a few clarifying questions, which I think are just clarifying questions, just to make sure everybody's super clear on what's expected. At three, actually, because you answered a couple of them, so it honed down my list. The first question, clarifying question is just, will applicants who qualified but didn't get funding in the first round, are they gonna need to reapply, or will they automatically get entered in for the next round? Or maybe folks who didn't get the full amount of funding who are eligible now for more funding?
Yes, this is a different program with different guidelines. We would ask for them to apply again.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. And then just to clarify also, and I think some of this is on your website, I just wanna make sure folks are super clear on what the requirements are to prove COVID-related hardship for eligibility.
Yeah, we are able to take, you know, we're very flexible. So, you know, we can take their unemployment, if they received unemployment, if they've got any past pay stubs or letters saying that they were laid off, or anything that really shows that there was a reduction hours or, or loss of a job. We are very flexible and we will accept it. So it's not hard and fast. But there is a list of items that we will be putting as guideline on the website of things that are needed. But again, we are flexible, and we were very flexible the first time around as well.
Awesome, thank you. And I think my last question is just, in round two, it talks about lower than eighty percent AMI and community disproportionately impacted by COVID. And so I just wanna, I'm wondering if you could expand a little bit on how that disproportionality will be determined as you're looking at additional funding?
That's a good question, and it came from the state. And so we were sort of trying to figure out, well, how are we going to really attack that? But one of the things that we want to look at for sure is, we want to look at some of the public health numbers that come out that talk about, you know, by zip code, which areas have been really impacted by COVID. There is also Urban, the Urban Institute had put together a priority index and had come up with zip codes that are those that families have been impacted by COVID, but then they are also sort of on the cusp of being homeless or vulnerable. So we are really going to look at a variety of indicators, but look at the more up-to-date public health information as also a guide.
Awesome, thank you so much. And yeah, I think I'd love to work closely with you, and I'm sure my colleagues will agree on getting the word out to our constituents so they know to apply. And anything you can forward us or that we can forward out would be really great. You know, Councilmember Ving and I did these community surveys back in March and April, talking about what do you need? And the number one thing that came up was rent assistance. And so we know that folks have been hurting, and we really wanna get them this assistance. And I have to echo the, the thanks to the community-based organizations that pushed those state bills, that pushed those federal bills, and that really kept the pressure on through this pandemic to make sure we could make folks, make folks at least as close to whole as we can after this crisis. So really excited to work very closely with you on this. And thank you again for all the work you've done in these last couple of weeks.
Thank you. We'll be getting some information out to all of you to share with your constituents shortly.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Laloe.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you very much for that extensive report. I just have a few questions. One, if there are tenants that for, well, can landlords directly apply for these programs if there are tenants that have simply refused to pay rent?
Yes, absolutely. The landlord can apply as well as the tenant can apply. So there are two options that are given. However, we do want to make sure that we get the approval of the tenant as well. So there is some tie-in in the portal where the tenant will also have to sign some paperwork, but absolutely the landlord can apply for, on behalf of the tenant.
Also, within your report, you indicated that there were some assistance that were made to unique landlords. Can you kind of break that down? What, what makes a landlord unique?
I'm sorry, I think I should clarify that. They're not unique. I just meant to say that I was not double-counting the numbers, that they were individual landlords that, you know, because sometimes different landlords might have, you know, the city and county, for example, they might be, you know, serving similar families. But this is just saying, this is a, this one landlord is counted only one time, even if though they might have helped a variety of families. That's what I meant.
And my last question, as far as the, the translation of these requirements, on what, what kind of a survey was done to pick these specific languages for translation? And can other languages be added? So I just wanna know what, what kind of a, a, a system was used?
Well, these are the languages based on the rental assistance programs that we have here in Sacramento. That these are the, the different languages that are most predominant, based on the families that we serve. And again, we can look at other languages. Keep in mind that, you know, it's on a platform where people can choose their languages. I think it is, is it Google? It's on Google platform, so, for example.
Census too, census data.
And census data. So, and, I'm sorry, and census data was also used. So the applications, you can get it translated in all different languages because it's on a Google platform. So Farsi, or, you know, Hindi, or a- any language. They're all, they can all be translated right away as well, the applications. In addition, when we have our communication center, and, you know, we get a lot of calls, we were getting about three hundred calls a day. Those are also, we can have a translation company online, and we can make sure that the family, even if the staff person can speak Farsi, for example, we can bring somebody to speak Farsi to the family on the phone as well. So both in the written form as well as verbally, we will have assistance in various languages. These are just the five main languages.
Great. Thank you very much. I know you have your work cut out for you. So whatever we can do to assist you and get more engagement from the community, please don't hesitate to reach out and, you know, bring myself or my colleagues to get involved. And sometimes you don't want us involved because that's more headaches. I fully understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the offer.
We want to allow you to do your job, which you do well, so well, and to work with the community. I, I, I wanna commend you as well for launching this audacious and necessary project and to thank the community-based organizations as well. I have some, a couple of detailed questions about priorities. You know, in the first round, and I know it was a different program, we allocated, as you said earlier, I think, sort of about four and a half million dollars. And we were able to serve nine hundred and thirty discreet families and our households. And so now we, we have like seven or eight times the amount of money that we had in that first round. Do you, do you have an opinion, or do you know whether or not there is going to be greater demand and application than even the thirty-one million dollars is going to cover?
Well, I think based on what we saw the first time, you know, even though the average was a little less than four thousand, there were many family in terms of their arrears that exceeded that amount. I mean, we even had some people who actually was up to twenty thousand dollars in arrears. So this is gonna give us an opportunity to really assist, you know, much more. And since that time, it keeps growing. It's been growing since, since we even did this in December. So I do think that we'll be able to have outreach. Now, will we need more than the thirty-one million dollars? I think that's to be a question that's, is too soon to answer because we are wondering about landlords who might be reticent to only take eighty percent versus a hundred percent. So once we get a little more data, and if the landlords are fine with that, then I think we'll be in a better position to see if we'll run through the thirty-some-odd million dollars. And then the good thing is that we are seeing that rental assistance is in the discussion for the new stimulus as well.
True. There's probably more money coming, which is great. But that's exactly why I asked the question, because I understand in this program, unlike the last one, there is no four thousand dollar cap. We're not imposing a four thousand dollar cap, correct?
Correct.
So what do we do if somebody is twelve months behind? They obviously have greater need than someone who's three months behind. What I worry about is that if too many people are twelve months behind and we spend most of the money, or a lot of the money on those folks, are we going to then not be able to cover as many people who are, as many households who are behind a fewer amount of months? Because even though we have eviction protection, I know through September, somebody evicted is, that's a bad result, whether they were behind twelve months or three months. And how are we strategically, or prior, in a priority, we're stretching these dollars to make sure that we are covering as many households that are at actual risk of eviction? That's the basis of my question. Since you're not putting, you're not putting on a cap, which I understand the flexibility, you wanna help that family that may be behind twelve months, well, of course. But at what, what's the opportunity cost?
Well, what we did see is that of those that applied during the first round, we saw that there were quite, some families that owed around six thousand in terms of rental arrears. Now, granted, we don't really know if maybe those families that had more in rental arrears just didn't apply because they knew what our cap was. But just based on the data that we have, we saw that it was around sort of like a six thousand amount. And so with, if, if that is the case, then I do feel as though that we will be still be able to cover quite a few families through this program.
The other thing too is that the state does allow us, if we expend all of the funds and there are other jurisdictions that do not, then they will redistribute money. So let's say, for instance, if we're able to, you know, use all of the money quickly and other jurisdictions are not, then that's why they have that deadline of, I believe it's August. Because then there will be a reordering, so more money could come our way. And in fact, they did tell us to actually apply for more than the amount that we had received.
And that is also, sorry to interrupt. Does the state have a restriction that prohibits us from capping the amount of assistance we can give to one household?
I'm sorry, did you say, does the state have a restriction on the amount?
On prohibiting a cap, is there any language in the, in the rules that, that restrict our ability to put a cap in place?
The state wants us to follow the program the way it is, so they do not want us to put a cap.
Yeah, and I, just to be clear, I'm not advocating for a cap. I'm just, I'm trying to understand how we, if, if the demand is greater than the thirty-one million, how we save as many households as we can from eviction. That's all.
No, I think that's a valid question, but it seems pretty clear that the state will probably redistribute funds.
Okay.
In addition to the federal government as well, because we have to spend the sixty-five. That's why we've gotta meet all these deadlines, because the federal government is also looking. If we spend all sixty-five percent by a certain timeframe, they're looking to also provide additional funds.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Getta?
Yeah, I, I do would like to get a report back here on this. And I just, one, one thing that's important about this is that we're moving in tandem with the county. And one of the concerns that has come up in the, in, as this, this program has been rolled out, and when we first tried it was particularly in districts like myself, where we have city and county so close together, and we have families that live on different sides, that it's difficult enough to talk about and get the information now. So the more that we can try to keep this program and, and however we move forward, in conjunction with our county partners, it's gonna help us in the education effort to get the right information out. So I do think it's important to get a report back and then also to, to kind of be working with the county at the same time on that effort. If there is more money to come, how we can tap into it, that, in that joint effort. So that's all I'll ask. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A great effort, and I think great questions about how do we maximize the amount that we have.
Okay, thank you. So there is no public testimony on the item? Must be great news. Okay, let's, let's call the role on the item, please.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Aspe?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Harris? He is online. We'll come back. Councilmember Valens?
Yes, enthusiastically, yes.
Council Vice Machinere?
Aye.
Councilmember Getta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
I'll join my colleague in saying enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, that's great. That's great news for a lot of people and families out there. And look forward to many good reports back. Thank you.
And I just really also wanted to mention that the county is very much in lockstep with the city, and they want their programs to be parallel, so there is no confusion. So we've come to the table collectively as we move forward, but we will report back.
Good, good. Thank you so much. Well, that completes the formal agenda. Are, is there public testimony and items not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two callers.
Let's hear from the public first.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis of To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. I believe this is a record. I'm the first speaker. I'm usually the last. And so it's refreshing to get out, out of the gate first. I did wanna say that, again, something very positive happened. Uh I did want to say that uh again, something very positive happened, Mayor and the rest of the city council and even the city manager's office. We was, we went viral during the Valentine's. Okay, so I mean, there's, there's really no excuse now to fund us because um we're doing, nobody's asking us how we're accomplishing these things. So shout out to the Davis family in Del Paso Heights for supporting our family-owned business as we try to get funding from an organization that has been very hostile to us. And and it's about selling cheesecakes. The, the other thing is uh the topics tonight, I think it's wonderful to help the people like you are. Uh the other thing is, I noticed that when the HR director spoke tonight, I never did see a photo of her. I I didn't see her. And reason I bring that up is because there was a scandal, for those of you who are, are not aware. There was a scandal in the city manager's office regarding the HR director. It was called the Berman Bailey um scandal. It was very, it was very cruel, actually, what they were doing. And so my focus now is to be funded. I'm listening at all these people talk tonight and they're talking about funding and and the, and how important it is. It is vital. So I hope that I can get two-thirds vote and get funded because we are not going to stop. I'm getting so much encouragement from local people and organizations that I've never met. And so it's just energizing me to keep pushing on. And if you notice, I've never used profanity when I call in or when I came to city council meetings.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, to the Bay and Back Cheesecake, fund us.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Uh good evening, council and mayor. Uh this is Steve Yule, District Six. I'd like you to encourage you to tour SMUD's solar facility known as the Hedge PV Facility. I would also encourage you to check with the U.S. Energy Information Administration on its track record. Sacramento County is challenged when it comes to getting renewables. So you should be paying attention to this as you uh work towards electrification. And and also, I would hope that you would pay attention to how much greenhouse, more greenhouse gas will be uh produced in the county as well as supporting any electrification. And also consider that uh the possibility of uh ordinance that would allow gas but only if the plumbing in the household is capable of supporting hydrogen. Another uh plant to tour is the Sutter Energy Center. That's the one who's going to come to bat when we run out of power through SMUD. The bank system uh has very little renewable on it, uh no wind power. Uh you can check with the Energy Administration, uh Information Administration on that. But uh we need to consider that uh for all practical purposes, at least right now, and SMUD's been at it for a while trying to do it, that we live in a renewables uh desert. Even their uh former lobbyist, Tim Tutt, made note that they deliver very little remo, renewables to the county. So be careful about uh going too fast into electrification. Um and uh putting more greenhouse gas into the air than what would be provided if you just directly burned the gas in the household. There's a lot of years.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Okay, uh SB one hundred uh requires no more resource shuffling. Make sure that we have renewables before you electrify. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Uh I know I have adjourned in memory. I know with Councilmember Harris and maybe some other members, Councilperson Sheeran, Ashby, and maybe a few others will want to join in as well because it's uh, it's close to home. Um but I, I will, I will wait on that. I've got um Councilmember Valenzuela, Mayor Pro Tim Ashby, and then Councilmember Harris, if it's on this, uh do you mind if I just kick it off and turn it over to you?
Um Mayor, I actually had a council comment as.
Okay, well, go ahead. Let's, let's start with Councilmember Valenzuela first. Let's go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and um I just wanted to take a moment to thank um everybody who worked on that Galleria Shelter. Um as of Friday, management was taken over by First Step Communities and Steve Waters' amazing team, which is a really, really exciting. But I want to reflect like all of that work that went into keeping it open for those like almost two weeks after the storm. And with Mayor Pro Tim Ashby, with Howard and Chris Conlon, with the mayor standing there next to me serving coffee as many nights as he could get down there um when it opened. Um you know, you have Daniel Bowers and the Yipsey staff and Rivka and her amazing team and just all of the volunteers. I just wanted to take this moment to reflect that. I mean, in the midst of all of the work that lies ahead and all of the stuff, I mean, there was this beautiful moment at this amazing building downtown where we all came together to just figure it out. And and I think we did a really great job. And I'm just so excited that Steve Waters' team is in there and managing that space. And I just want to announce, because I've gotten a lot of inquiries, because Sacramento is that city where folks are like, how do I sign up for more four AM shifts at the warming center? I don't know where that comes from, but it's amazing generosity of spirit. Folks want to keep helping out. And so I want to make sure folks know. I've heard through First Step that they're going to set up an online forum on their website if folks want to keep helping at the centers as they stand those up. Um and so that should be stood up soon. It's not there yet, but if you fill out the form on their website now, when they're ready to start recruiting volunteers, they'll start contacting folks through that form. And I'm just really, really excited to be able to count that. I think is a really big win um for the city and want to thank the staff and a lot of my colleagues who were a really big part of of making that work. So thank you, Mayor, for the.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Valenzuela. Thank you for your leadership and hard work as well on that. Meant a lot. Okay, I've got Mayor Pro Tim Ashby. I've got Councilmember Harris.
Thank, thanks, Mayor. A quick announcement and then I'll help you with yours too. Okay?
Okay.
Uh first of all, I, I would just want to echo Katie or Councilmember Valenzuela. I am so relieved that Steve Waters and company are down there. I was so, I was so worried, but you know, it really was so heartwarming to see people from Sacramento. Every time we needed help and we put out a call, I know Councilmember Vang and Councilmember Valenzuela and the mayor and myself put that out lots of times. And every time people from Sacramento showed up at four in the morning to help, even in the middle of COVID, it was the most heartening thing. And it was extremely difficult. And I know we aren't the right people to lead it. I'm glad we have the right people now. But I'm also uh honored to have been a part of it with you, Katie, Councilmember Valenzuela, and uh Councilmember Vang and Mayor. And I just thank you, Howard, to you and your team, Daniel Bowers and Chris and Shannon and the whole Park staff and uh Rivka, of course, and everybody that that just made it work. I mean, she, she's right. It was a just a make-it-work situation. And we did. And I'm really proud of us too. And uh we got across the finish line, thank goodness. So thank, God bless Steve Waters and his crew. I was so happy to see them there this weekend when I went down. Uh and then, Mayor, I just wanted moment of privilege here to brag for a second on Councilmember Harris and my uh behalf. We launched a COVID vaccination site last week, which some of you know about. We were pretty excited because the governor made us stop by. It was in, it's in Councilmember Harris's district. He's done a lot of outreach, as has Karina in my office, as has the Notomas Unified School District. And today, Jorge, our wonderful auditor, thank you, Jorge, helped us put together some graphs and charts around those numbers. I put them on Facebook and Twitter just now, but uh we beat the state and the county average in diversity distribution, Mayor. So I'm very proud of this. Councilmember Harris did a robo-call. Karina uh went to all kinds of places uh to try to get folks to just know about this. And we really made an intentional effort to be an equitable distribution site. And so far, so good. Really, really proud of that work. We did a thousand vaccinations last Thursday and we will do that every Thursday moving forward. It's a partnership with Notomas Unified, the city and the county. And I know I speak for Councilmember Harris and myself when I say we're super proud of everybody on all of those teams. So, thank you, Mayor.
Good job. It's great. And you know, this thing is beginning to turn around. It is beginning to turn around. You can feel it. And um let's just keep doing our part and uh may we meet in chambers together uh as a city council sometime soon. All right, I've got, who else do I have? I got uh Jeff Harris first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um thanks to Councilmember Ashby and Karina Telamontes. You know, this is a great program, the vaccination program in South Notomas, and it truly reflected equity, which is what we're trying to do in the city. We know that people of color are struggling more with COVID nineteen. And uh this is a great way to, to get on top of that, beating the state average, you know, for Latinos and African Americans. It's really pretty exciting. This is an ongoing program through June, I believe. So uh many people will be able to avail themselves of vaccinations, which is just frankly, very exciting. And as, as you said, it leads our way to, to normalcy. Uh my one council comment is that I will be speaking about the homeless master plan, siding and operations at River Park Neighborhood Association this Thursday, starting at seven thirty PM. That will also include the McKinley Village Homeowners Association. Uh so we're carrying on the work and um getting the word out for you, Mayor.
Thank you so much for us, for all of us. It's uh, as, as we address the emergency, to bring as many people indoors as possible every night, regardless of the weather, we must also complete a master siding plan so that we have our sites in place. And then we can move forward with actually housing people on a longer-term basis, by the thousands, by the thousands. So I know my colleagues, I want to turn, I just want to take the priv, you know, privileges, Mayor, just to make the first comment, but it, it's so sad to me. Steve Cohn um sat on this city council for how many years? Twenty?
Twenty years.
Twenty, twenty years. And um, you know, is a, is a loved and beloved member of the community. He and his wife Catherine Travers have two children, Nicole and Adam. And we all received, or I received, the terribly sad news last week that their daughter Nicole Cohn Kapoor died um at age thirty-eight. An aggressive form of cancer. And, you know, it, it, this, obviously, there are tragedies that occur, you know, in our community every day. It just hits home, close to home with a colleague who I served with Steve during my first run on the city council. But um to lose your daughter, your thirty-eight-year-old daughter, um to cancer, just starting her professional life, she was a respected social worker and had um a great spirit. Um and in the last year of her life, I know as she was struggling with this deadly disease, um gave more to her family than uh, than she received in terms of her spirit and her and just her, her zest for life. And uh so as a city, you know, somebody devotes twenty years like this to elective service or any service, um they lose their, they lose their child. It just uh breaks my heart. And I know it breaks all yours as well. So I'd like to, with all of you, uh adjourn our meeting tonight in memory of Nicole Cohn Kapoor, survived by her mom and dad, brother Adam, and and her husband as well. And uh I know there was a private funeral service today. And uh talked to Steve and he said, you know, maybe once uh we're done with COVID, maybe they'll have some kind of a a public uh celebration of, of her life. Thank you. It's, I know a couple of other colleagues want to weigh in as well. Jeff, Angelique?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to have a word here. You know, Steve gave a lot to the city. Twenty years, twenty years on city council, longest-seated council member in Sacramento history. I believe that when he first took a seat, Nicole was about twelve years old. And um, you know, that really puts it in perspective. I cannot imagine as a parent, you know, the idea of losing a child, you know, before my passing. It's about the hardest burden a parent could bear. And um, you know, this, this kind of chokes me up. Um Nicole was a very sweet young woman, very giving, like her dad, uh bright, like both her parents. I just wanted to say that my heart goes out to both Steve and Catherine. Because, you know, they gave a lot to the city and they had to lose their child. And uh I'm just thinking of them a lot. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. From the heart, man. Thank you. Angelique?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh Steve is my friend and he was my very good friend on this council dais. I went to Nicole's wedding. It was beautiful. It was in the Crocker. And uh Steve was, well, he was Steve, extremely happy and uh dancing and on cloud nine. Sometimes Nicole would go on some of the mission studies with us or to some of the visits we would do and you know, she uh is just a little bit younger than me, so we hung out a lot on those events and went to coffee. And when she was in school back on the East Coast, Steve was really worried that she wouldn't come home. He wanted her to come back to Sacramento. And I remember him asking me to try to sell her on Sacramento so she would come back. And so I tried, but it wasn't that hard. She wanted to be with him anyway. And uh when I talked to her, she just as Councilmember Harris has described, Nicole is like one of those rare individuals, soft-spoken, beautiful, so kind. All she wanted to do with her life was be a social worker to help people, especially children. She uh was one hundred percent the pure joy of her dad's life. And I know um Steve well enough to know that uh I'm sure this is beyond devastating to him. I did reach out to him. I, you know, it's not fair and life is so short. And uh she, she had so much more to give. And I feel really sad for what we as a city have lost in her and uh, and for the whole that will be in Steve's heart now. So, Mayor, thanks for adjourning in Nicole's honor. She was spectacular.
Should say, we also prepared a resolution for signed by all of you that uh the family received today at the service. So thank you all for doing that. Thank you. Councilmember Bagueta, Eric?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I also want to give my condolences to Steve. Um I think Nicole was just eighteen when I first met Steve. And he uh never missed a Sac State game, you know, let me, he was always there, giving so much, twenty-two years. And so um I appreciate how much he's been a father and uh community member and a mentor for a lot of young folks. And the fact that this is a, a difficult time for his family, so I just want to give my condolences to Steve and Catherine and family. You know, this is a difficult time and our, our heart and our thoughts go to you and your family.
Very good. Anybody else? Okay. In memory of Nicole Cohn Kapoor, um if there's nothing further to come before our city council tonight, be safe. Um and uh thank you. We are adjourned.